We're live.
Okay, we're broadcasting.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for joining us for our third budget work session. The C attorney will drop off the line temporarily and she'll dial in so she can be back with us. I want to thank everyone for being a part of this meeting. I do not have an agenda packet for this work session. Madam clerk, were you able to get the information in a timely fashion to prepare a packet for us?
No ma'am, I was not.
Okay, so we're going to do this off of memory on how the meetings normally flow. So I'd like to bring the meeting to order and can you start with roll call please?
Mayor Gore.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Here.
Counselor Randolph.
Here.
Counselor Holloway.
Present.
Counselor Parton. Counselor Denton.
Here.
Counselor Pelham.
Present.
Thank you so much. And so IT director, C manager, I just spoke briefly about trying to make sure we can maintain the controls of the software. So I asked the IT director to make Mr. Altman temporary host so he can share his PowerPoint presentation and then to switch it back, Mr. Altman.
Mr. City Manager, you have control.
Right. Okay, it's up if you want to.
Okay, while he begins, I'll ask IT to work on making me a host for this meeting. Mr. Altman, for this presentation, we just received it. Was this able to be uploaded on our city's website so the public can view it?
Not yet, no ma'am.
It will be up later on tonight or tomorrow?
Yep, it'll be up this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, and just remind counsel of the rules for our work session, please. If you have a question or comment, at least let Mr. Altman get finished with the slide that he's on and then use the raise hand feature to be acknowledged. And then I will call on you to, for your questions or during the presentation, those who are joining us via phone. I believe right now that's just Counselor Holloway. If you have anything to share, just say, "Madam Mayor," and I'll call on you and you can share your questions as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And if there is anyone else that's joining us by phone that I have missed, just let me know. I'm looking at the participants. So, okay, the same thing goes for when she joins us. All right, Mr. Altman, proceed.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. This evening, we'll go through some of the discussion of revenue. We, at the first work session that we had, Madam Mayor, you mentioned looking at reduction of revenue. So we'll have a discussion of, you'd mentioned $500,000 reduction and what that might look like on the expenditure side for you. We've also had some little questions that council has asked over the past few work sessions, some answers to those. So just some of our same slides regarding the budget, total budget amount, what our operating general fund is. These are the general fund revenues that are proposed for FY21 comparison to FY20. General fund for all funds, general revenue for all funds. These are the expenditure side for proposed FY21 as opposed to 20. Again, the all funds expenditures for FY21. So council's requests up to this point have been a definition of some of the revenue terms which we discussed at the last work session. A discussion of the outside revenue amount for hopeful water renewal, which we did at the last work session, and the scheduling a joint work session with the school board on May 14th. Council has also asked for outside agency letters, so that's in the packet that you have in your boxes. And I also sent it out through the Ignite Dropbox, so you should have gotten an email where you can download that packet. The file size was a little large based on the fact that we have all of the Munis line item sheets in there. Also, you have in that packet expenditures to date for the current budget year for our departments. And then you have, then we had a question about water renewal borrowing prior to the grant award. I've looked for some information and I haven't been able to find a definitive answer, but I'm wondering if council. You probably did a resolution of intent to reimburse prior to actually bonding the project.
Nope.
And you may, if you did that, then that would have allowed you to spend city dollars to say, "Design the project." And when the bonds were issued, then those funds would be replenished back to the city if you issued that resolution of intent to reimburse when you did those projects. Then we had a discussion of EMS cost recovery. So this is.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Since he is going through these operating budget items one by one, Ms. Pelham had an input that I'd like to hear on that hopeful water renewal.
Counselor Randolph, at the beginning of the meeting, I just gave the instructions, so let him go through the slide. I saw Counselor Pelham's hand up and I'm going to acknowledge her when he gets done with this slide, but he ended up slipping. So I see it raised. It was on this first slide. I was going to call your name, but he started turning, so I'm tracking.
Okay, I have a question on that slide.
Yes, I know. I'm waiting for him to get finished with it, but he started turning. I didn't know if he was flipping through something or he was turning the next slide. I was going to acknowledge you.
Talking about EMS, that's when I asked.
I understand you blurted out again. Again, I just stated the rules for the meeting, which is a standard rules for all council meetings, please speak when you're called on. As I just stated at the beginning of this, I asked for Mr. Altman to do each slide and then we'll call on people once they raise their hand for questions. I do see Counselor Pelham's hand raised. As I just stated, when he finished his slide, I was going to call on her. So thank you, Counselor Pelham, for raising your hand and waiting. Mr. Altman, are you done with this first slide so I can call on her?
So we have information regarding cost recovery, the question asked about EMS cost recovery in the presentation tonight. And a discussion of revenue or expenditure reductions in that amount of $500,000. The other outstanding request is you asked for the departmental justifications. That's pending. We believe that'll be ready for you on Thursday. With that, I'm done with that slide.
Thank you, Counselor Pelham.
Okay, um, can you?
In one second, Counselor Pelham, before you start speaking, can you please mute your lines right now until I get control of the mute buttons? Because I hear laughing in the background and just to make sure this meeting goes smoothly, can you just mute our lines until we're called on? And then I'll acknowledge you and you can unmute your line, please. Right now, the only person who should be unmuted is the C attorney, Counselor Pelham, and Mr. Altman.
Okay, so again, when you go back and we need some type, I need more than just what maybe you think we did. We need, munis should have some type of input or verification or, I mean, even if finance, I would imagine should be able to find it somewhere. If in fact, is Mr. Dane on the line? Maybe his memory is better than mine, but I don't remember doing anything of that type. I think this, that's my, was my point.
I have no recollection, Ms. Pelham, at all on that.
And if you don't recall it, that probably mean we didn't do it. So there's $25 million out there somewhere that we either still owe or somebody owe us. I don't, I don't know which way, but we need to find, definitely find some solidification or some paperwork to sustain this $25 million that's left out in the air with water renewal. Okay. And that's, and expenditures to date, you say that's in this small package that we get?
Yes, it's in the packet that is, that was put in the Ignite Dropbox and also in your council mailboxes.
Okay, what I'm saying, is it the thick one or the little one? Because I just get both. The little, what you reading from now or the other package?
The other packet, the bigger one.
Okay, I'll have to look for that then. Okay.
You, Ms. Counselor Pelham, you and you mentioned this water renewal. Do you have a timeframe? That, because we may have to go back and look at council minutes to see what action was taken. Because most everyone involved with those projects is not, no longer with the city, so we're trying to research it and find what happened or what occurred. And if we need to look at minutes, just having some, because it was a two-phase project. One was the moving of the primary plant from the landfill to the water renewal site, which was, I think, the discussion of that began in 13, but I don't know when the project actually occurred. And then I don't know when the large project occurred.
Yeah, can I suggest you call the former city manager, Mr. Haley? I'm sure he would be. He would, he would know. I remember we got $44 million from somewhere. We got another $5 million from, I guess, the state. And then that left, I think, the $25 million for the other plants, in my opinion, should, I thought they were paying it, but he should have some recall because he was directly related, I mean, involved with that. And he should definitely know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Pelham. Are you complete?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Altman, there are no other hands raised right now. You can move on to the next slide.
So this is just the definition of terms that we talked about at the last meeting, the outside revenue at water renewal from the last, last meeting. And now we get to cost recovery.
One moment, Mr. Altman. Counselor Pelham, you have your hand raised. Was it something related to the slides he just passed by? Counselor Pelham, you have to unmute your line, please. And Mr. Altman, can you go back to the slide with the terms? Because I, I think.
Right there, that's what I.
Oh, the one he was just on? Okay, go ahead.
Go, go, go back up one more, Mr. Altman. And this is just outside revenue that we get as a total for?
Yes, ma'am.
From low.
So this is, as this, we talked about this last week. This is the fund, the money that we get on outside revenue from mainly comes from landfill leachate. Where landfill operators have to dispose of their, the water runoff from the landfill. So we are, we have the ability to treat the runoff at the wastewater treatment plant. So the big jump into 19, one is a result of the fact that it rained a great deal last year. And with rain, there's constant runoff and leachate that has to be treated. And then they also expanded the capacity to offload leachate trucks. So they can do two at a time and they cycle more through, which helped increase outside revenue. FY20, we're on pace for probably a little bit more than $5 million a year, maybe six for the year. But right now, we're at $5 million for outside revenue.
And this revenue comes from the plants, correct?
No, ma'am. This, this revenue comes from outside sources.
Or the ones that don't have the capability to treat their.
Right, so this, this would come from not, not anyone that's connected to our system.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor Pelham. Are you complete?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Altman. Go ahead.
So council at the last meeting had asked to see where we were with our EMS cost recovery. And so we have it broken down by calendar year at the top and fiscal year at the bottom. So we have instituted cost recovery in calendar year 17. And you can see that we have received in 17, $272,000. And then in calendar year 18, $702,000. And then in calendar year 19, where they were at 681. And then it's broken down a little bit differently by fiscal year down, down to the bottom. So those numbers are balanced out a little bit. We have, you'd asked what the salary of the individual that does the cost recovery for us, so that the individual makes $38,000 a year. So I would probably say that position more than pays for itself and the amount of revenue that we're able to receive from the recovery perspective.
Thank you. There are no hands raised for this slide, Counselor Pelham. Reminder, does your hand raise for this one or is it up from the last time?
Yes, for both.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, in this, and with benefits, how much is that total? About 50, how many benefits? It'd be about 12 grand because she's employ you, right, full-time?
Yes, ma'am. So probably around $50,000, $52,000 total.
And is she the only person that does this program?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Altman.
So then, at the last council meeting, and I thought I'd go ahead and put this in here this evening, council asked about what we've done thus far on COVID expenses. So the, to date, we've spent approximately $85,000 on COVID-related expenses that we have submitted to FEMA for reimbursement. Our PPE and cleaning supplies are the largest amount of that, at about $49,000. The increased costs with our cleaning services there, our IT costs, both at the EOC and in general, we had to be with everyone out doing telework. We had to increase some of our firewall capability to make sure that our network was protected. And then we were tracking time off as related to employees that are off as a result of COVID-19-related illness. So that's what we spent thus far in costs to the city. And again, we've submitted that to FEMA for, for our, look towards hopefully getting some reimbursement. Also, just as an aside, there have been a couple of questions as of late that have come in regarding CFS, our trash service, trash pickup service has ceased doing bulk pickup at the curb. And they are allowing individuals to bring it to their landfill. And then, of course, we've reopened the city convenience center for individuals to do drop-off of bulk, bulk items and leaves and debris and limbs that we've done, that we always take there. We also, we're looking at and hopefully will be rolling out very soon, a program where if you do not have the ability to get your bulk item to the convenience center or to the CFS landfill, you can call, you'd be able to call Public Works and schedule an appointment. We would bring out a truck to pick it up. The property owner would be responsible for getting it in the truck, but we would haul it off for them. We're working on that program and hopefully, again, we'll have that rolled out here shortly with a press release and some information out. So how our residents could take advantage of that program. So just wanted to let, let council know and those that are listening know that we're working to find a solution to that problem for our residents.
Great.
Question, Mr. Altman. Do you have your hand raised from last time or this current time?
Does the, the PPE include the item that we purchased to clean city buildings?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you. Counselor Pelham, can you please lower your hand when you're done asking your question so I can know if it's a new time or the old one, please? And I have a question, this, because there are no other hands raised at this time. You said this is for the overall expenses because I've been asking about how we're tracking them. So this is everything that we purchased that you know up to date for COVID-19. And if it is, this is, you asked for reimbursement for people for all of this, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I knew at one point there was concerns about if IT-related expenses would be covered. Now that might start covering the telework policies. That was discussed on the call with Congressman McKeechen that you and I were on. And he said right now they're looking at just giving localities and states of bulk money as opposed to trying to get them to change their policy.
We, we don't know if they, if Congress has done that yet, but we've submitted the costs regarding what we've needed to FEMA to see if they'll reimburse it for us. We do, we have some EOC IT costs that they should reimburse, but we've submitted it and we'll see what, what comes out of FEMA's response.
Okay, right now, when staff is asking to purchase something, they're taking it out of their department budgets, correct?
Correct.
Thank you very much. Counselor Pelham, is that your hand raised?
What I'm doing, do I have to be unmuted to?
No, your hand is still raised. That's how I know.
No, in front of my hand is something that says mute and more. And I can't move those items to let the hand down. So, Ms. IT, can you help me?
Okay.
Mr. City, Mr. City Manager is the host, so he, he, he has the ability to lower the hand.
Well, so would you please do that for me because I can't get this, this block.
All right, let's see.
If, if you click next to her name, you should be able to lower her hand.
Well, right now, I, all I can see, because I'm sharing my PowerPoints on the screen, I can't get to that raise hand menu.
Okay, well, while we work on this, Counselor Pelham, I'll just check to see if you have a question or not until we get that resolved. Right now, there are no other hands raised. You can move on to the next slide.
So the mayor had suggested at the, at our first work session regarding revenue about a potential of reducing revenue by half a million dollars. So in that, you had asked for me to look at where we would cut expenditures. So these are some areas in which we could reduce expenditures. We could reduce or eliminate all travel in the budget, which would result in that $328,000 savings. Reduce office supplies, that's the 206,000 is the total office supply amount for the entire city. Other supplies which deal with fire, police, public works and the sheriff, there's $410,000 that we could look at. And then there's also, we could look at reducing the fixtures, furniture, machinery and equipment, the 83, 180, 184,000. However, a majority of that is all IT-related expenditure, so I wouldn't would not probably recommend that we address that area. So those are some areas that we're looking at. I would let council know that when we prepared our budgets, this budget, the operational budget this year, we did have to do some reductions in departmental budgets, in the city budget in general, to accommodate the healthcare and VRS cost increase that we're experiencing this year. We all, we did that across the board with the exception of three to three offices, which were the council, the clerk and the attorney. Since I don't control those offices, I didn't reduce those requests, but I did make adjustment. We did make adjustments across other departments that do report to me. So council will have to have a discussion and it is a decision point for councils to whether you want to reduce revenues by $500,000. I, I think that we have good revenue projections from our, our primary sources, which are MNT, from our commissioner's office and our real estate assessor. So I, we feel confident in the numbers that we have with regarding the two primary sources that we have, I think, which were the two that were discussed at the first work session, but that will have to be a decision point for council as to whether you want to move forward with that reduction. And then we will make a like reduction in our operating budgets, but these are the main areas which we could go to and identify. We'd have further discussions with certainly police, fire, public works as regards to the other supplies as to what, that may, how that may affect their operation. And then looking at travel and others, we may, we would probably wouldn't be, we would not be able to eliminate all office supplies, but we may have to make some percentage reduction. But those are the, the large areas within the budget that we could look at. Again, we're confident in the revenue projections and I understand the uncertainty of where we are. But I think we're on solid ground as we move forward. So, and then you have the discussion of if you want to reduce any of the funding for any of the outside agencies that we have. There's some that are fixed costs, some that are, are not, but we have the ability, if we need to, to have that conversation. So with with that, I'm just looking to see what kind of guidance council has and the questions you have with regard to revenue projections and where we are and what you would like and what direction council would like for us to proceed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Altman. I do see some hands raised, but you noted me in your comments, so I just want for the public to, that's viewing. Just for background, there was an anticipated $500,000 increase in the revenue projections. And that's why I suggested if we could have an alternative budget in tandem that had a reduction to see if we did level funding, what that will look like. So thank you for giving us this estimate of where you would think to cut first. I just have two questions. When you said reduce office supplies, I thought, I heard you mention with the total budgets for office supplies, but I want to make sure I'm hearing that correctly. What is the office supplies total is?
For the entire city is the 206.
So you're saying use all, take away all office supplies?
No, no, what we, that's the total amount available. If we reduced office supplies, we'd have to reduce a portion of that. We couldn't cut everyone's ability to purchase office supplies in the upcoming year.
Thank you, and I'm sorry, my dogs are barking right now because the other question is reduce reduce other supplies, what other ones are you talking about with fire, public work?
So those are some, those are related to if they have any work where you have to use any, any of their medical expenses or laboratory expenses, repairs or maintenance, laundry or janitorial. So those are items that we would have to look at as to how that would actually affect day-to-day operations before we would make recommendations on what, what of those dollars we could reduce.
Okay, thank you. My last comment is, in reducing travel, I think that that, if council wanted to make a reduction, just to err on the side of caution for this upcoming budget, I can support that if it's reducing travel across the board. Right now, obviously with COVID-19, anyone tracking the news knows that there's not, there's going to be limited travel for the foreseeable future. Because there's going to be a second wave, fingers crossed it won't be as bad as this one, but we'll definitely be living in a different world in terms of social distancing permanently. And while some places are opening up, people need to be cautious. And so I can imagine that reducing travel and eliminating that, quite frankly, would probably be the best approach for this time being. And I know some of the organizations that I typically frequent, NLC and VML, they already start addressing a meeting our needs remotely. We have webinars more than we have before. We have other updates that we get electronically. And so I think the world is changing. So right now, I would support if we had to reduce the budget, eliminating travel, certainly to begin with. Counselor Pelham, your hand is raised, and Vice Mayor Bennett. Counselor Pelham, can you unmute your line, please? If not, then I'll move on to, all right.
Why does this particular public works, and I saw reviewing the budget, some people have janitorial costs and others don't. Will we have an overall janitor contract? What would they be contracting for?
So some departments have, because they're a standalone building, they have that cost within their budget. They weren't included in the overall contract that was lit a couple of years back when we did that contract. So like the fire department, they don't, they handle their own janitorial. They, they clean themselves. The new police station, that wasn't included in the original contract. So that had to be an item that we amended and added. So it's not across, completely across the board.
Okay, and then if we eliminated the travel for city clerk, city council and attorney, then that will probably make up, make it 100 and whatever, make it five, over $500,000, right?
Well, that actually, that number includes council, all, all, that's, that's all travel in the city. Well, that actually, that number includes council, all, that's all travel in the city.
Clerk as well, clerk and attorney, all of?
Yes, ma'am.
I thought you said it didn't, that's why I was.
When we did, when I did reductions, when we made reductions to balance the budget originally, we did not make any reductions in those three offices since the clerk and the attorney are council appointees and council's budget is council's budget to deal with. We made reductions in the rest of the departments to balance the budget.
So then, but it doesn't include the constitutional officers, correct?
I don't believe so.
I think we, we cross the board, me, of course, adding them too. I mean, give us a different figure on them.
The travel number includes everybody. That's all travel in the entire city.
Okay, so that includes the commissioner and the rep, I pulled that out as an item and added up to travel for most departments, and those departments have seventeen thousand dollars in travel.
Yeah, so that's, that would be the, all of the administration, the treasurer, the Commonwealth attorney, commissioner revenue, sheriff, circuit court clerk, city council, city clerk, and city council, I mean, city attorney.
And what is VOIP phones? Is that the phones that you use every day?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, the ones that sit on the desk?
Yes, ma'am. Those are voice-over IP. We're changing our phone system from our old system to voice-over IP, which runs to the internet.
Alrighty, thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Bennett. Your line is muted.
Yes, thank you. Mr. City Manager, I have a question. I was listening to the reduce other supplies in reference to the fire, police, public works, and the sheriff's department. And I know you said it was for medical expenses. When you say medical expenses, what was that in reference to?
I'm sorry. Say in the fire department, we purchase other supplies for EMS. So that's why I said we'd have to look at what those are specifically in each department and if we can make, we can utilize that line, but what we tried to do was find a large enough line items across the city offices to which we could garner the type of revenue that was being discussed. But we would certainly need to make sure that if we reduced that line item in any fashion, it did not have an effect on their ability to provide service to the community.
Okay, so I did listen to you said repairs, maintenance, and cleaning, janitorial, and I guess for for laundry, and here's my concern. When it comes to emergency services, I don't agree with deducting anything from their budget, especially right now. When it comes to cleaning, those, in that area, when it first responders, it's very important that they have these things done and that they're mission-ready. Because if they, if we end up taking that away, I mean, there's a certain code that we have to follow here. I mean, I'm assuming, only because of my knowledge of being, you know, prior, but I'm really, especially with COVID nineteen and with a lot of biological things that are happening within our country, especially now in our state, I think it's really important that we support the the fire, police, public works, and the sheriff's department. And I would like to, I hope other counselors agree with me, but I would not want to reduce anything from their budget at all. If not, I would actually want to give them more. And so that's what I just wanted to talk about, because it's really important that we focus on, you know, the safety of our city and that those that are serving our city in this capacity are mission-ready. So that's all I need to say.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Bennett. Councilor Randolph?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Altman, thank you for some suggested areas of expenditure reduction. I'm not sure at this point with just a single line item of travel being the one thing that we latch on to. Certainly, I find it refreshing that we want to now cut travel, but I think that to cut everybody's travel for the next year, I would want to look at some more details about certifications, licensing, and things like that, that we may want to or have to keep in there. Because even though things may be online, I attend a lot of webinars and things online, but they still cost to register. So until we find out a few more details about that, I would be leery to a hundred percent cut all travel or expenses for travel and any associated costs. I know our budget at council is seventy-one thousand dollars for travel and all related expenses. So certainly, I'm all for cutting all that travel if we can. But there was another thing that I wanted to ask you about, and that was, at the last meeting, I had mentioned something to the effect of the school program going on, or the schools going on to our accounting system of munis and a potential cost for that. And associated with that is your potential financial suggestions of how much the city departments are saving, if at, if any, on this year's budget during their shutdowns of their departments or excuse me, of actually functioning at a lower capacity than they normally would. Are we going to see cost savings out of that budget because of this? And if so, have you all looked at projecting that? And so those are my two inputs for you.
Okay, so to address your first question regarding munis and extending, putting schools on munis, the cost of that would be about three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to do, to implement that. And then you would have a reoccurring cost of around twenty-three thousand a year to do that. So then regarding COVID savings, if we'll call it that, we have not projected out to the end of the year, but we can, we can do that, we can look at that. I would, I do anticipate some level of savings in the budget, because we're not, we're not traveling, we're not doing as much as we have in the past. So there will be some savings in that would be seen at the bottom line when we close the year in, the year out. I am anticipating, I don't, I don't have a number. You know, I do anticipate we will have savings based on how we're operating right now.
Can you all do a projection for this council and for the next work session so that we kind of have an idea, or as soon as you can get that, to tell us what that may, that that figure may look like, at least roundabout?
We can, we can work on it, whether it would be for Thursday or for the, another, a future work session, or when I get it, just send it to you regardless of the work session schedule.
Yeah, that would be fine if you just send it to everybody, so that at least we have it. I think that's important for us to know. That would be rollovers to, back to the GL? Or are there some capital improvements that have been stopped because of this?
We have not stopped any capital improvements at this point. Our big capital project that we have going on right now is the Pine Street Corridor work, which is one of our VDOT revenue sharing projects. Paving, those are the large capital projects that we have working now that are part of our reimbursement program with VDOT. We're in the beginning stages of phase, you know, design, looking at who to get phase two of the Riverwalk designed, but we haven't led any construction contract for that project at this point. So mainly what we're doing is our VDOT reimbursement program projects at this point from a capital perspective.
Okay, thank you. I'm done.
Thank you. I still see hands raised for Vice Mayor Bennett and Councilwoman. Is that purpose, on purpose, or is that because? Okay, Councilwoman, you said it was on purpose? Do you have a question? If you do, your line is still muted, Councilwoman.
Which, too much, too much. Waste water, is they not included in any of these reductions? At all, I mean.
Travel.
I mean, other than travel, I mean, for their operational things, they, you didn't see anywhere that they could cut?
We haven't looked at their, I mean, their operational. We looked at, we haven't gone into each individual department to say, give me the fine tooth here as to what you can do and what you can reduce. We just looked for large areas that we could identify to try to get that at five hundred thousand dollars. And again, it's going to be a decision of council, if you want to reduce revenue for the revenue projection for the upcoming year, the number that you pick, then we're going to have to work towards that number, period. That may end up being more than the options we have on the table at the moment, based on how much you choose to reduce revenue. Or if you don't choose to reduce revenue, then it could stay the same. But if you're looking to fund something additionally, as Mrs. Vice Mayor Bennett had suggested, then we would need to look for that offset somewhere else in the budget, if you wanted to put more money in one place than what we have right now.
So we're going to go over each department individually when we get to that portion?
If you want to go through each department, we can. Again, we didn't fund any new initiatives in any department based on our projection that we weren't going to, we were trying to level fund everything. But if you have, and I know you and I talked earlier, so if there's a desire to fund something with a little bit more money, then I've got to find, assuming you don't reduce revenue and you want to put a little bit more money to one other program, then I have to find an equal reduction somewhere in the budget. So it's balanced.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Altman. Before you move on to the next slide, I just have one question. I know we're giving you a lot of different requests, but there was some good points made today about travel as well. So it would be helpful to know before we potentially reduce all travel across the board, to see whose associations have adjusted due to COVID nineteen. Certainly, I can say, like, I share from NLC and VML's perspective, they're doing a lot of different things remotely now, but I'll definitely check with those organizations to see what their game plan is moving forward. NLC and VML definitely give certifications out for elected officials, but the biggest value in going to those conferences is bringing back resources and technical assistance. So reducing that is also something that potentially eliminate potential grants and other things like that that we get in return from being participating members and applying for them. So I would definitely put in a message to the executive directors of both organizations to see how they plan to address COVID nineteen moving forward, but it would be helpful if the other associations that members of staff frequently attend, if they can give us information regarding that. And again, as I said before, I really do support trying to eliminate something that we can, but I definitely think it should be equitable across the board. And the other question I had in regards to reducing the supplies for public works and sheriff's office, I agree with Vice Mayor Bennett. That's why I was asking off of your recommendations, what were you looking at in these supplies? So did you look at our public safety because it has a high dollar value, or is that something that you feel can be reduced? I'm just curious.
We just looked at the high dollar value that you could accumulate from that as not knowing how high you wanted to go with reduction. But again, we would have to look at what impact, operating impact that particular line item would have on the offices and what we could and could not do with, for each individual department. Not just making a, let's say, dollar amount across the board for each one of them, because it may have a different impact on, say, fire and their ability to provide, buy medical supplies for EMS or versus public works and what they may be able to do, but we can, we can look at that in depth. But I'm just looking at right now, what number, if any, council is looking to reduce revenue to, so then we can make some definitive recommendations as to get to that number.
Okay, well, I, I too don't support reducing anything with public safety or even anything related to IT at this time, especially since we are in a different world now with remote technology. So I guess when we have future conversations regarding individual budgets and departments and other things, maybe through the course of that, there might be some other recommendations, and we may not get to five hundred thousand, maybe to get to a hundred thousand, who knows? But we can have future conversations. So thank you for doing this and putting a recommendation up there. I think Councilor Dent just raised her hand. I think Councilor Dent, your line is muted.
I just, I have a question for the city manager. We keep talking about reducing our revenue. But when you prepare the budget, you did not consider reducing the revenues, I don't believe. So if we, if we, in looking at these items, go along with what you have prepared for the budget, if say after the first quarter of the new fiscal year, we see that there are some costs, can't we go back and adjust the budget at that time, or does that have to be done before we vote on the budget?
So Councilor, sorry, Councilor Dent. If, so if we assume that council approves the budget as submitted, just, okay. If we find that during the year, the first quarter of the year, we're lagging behind in revenue projections as a result of continuation of COVID nineteen, then what we would do on our side of the House is go in and make cuts to the budget or reductions to the budget to reflect where we think we're going, where we are within, with regard to slow revenues coming in at the beginning of the year. Obviously, the hope is that while I probably, I agree that when we reopen this economy and we probably are looking at that for the end of the fiscal year, you'll probably see a reflection of increased cases, either late summer, early fall, with regard to people that are out and about, and that's kind of been the projection of some of the models. So we looked at where we are, and when we're talking about the general fund, that's primarily based on real estate, personal property, and our M and T. So those revenue projections, we were quite comfortable with, with regard to looking at the general fund expenditures.
Thank you very much. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Dent and Mr. Altman. You can move on.
This is what I have for you. I didn't know what other questions council may have or what directions you want to go in with regard to additional information that you want to help in the budget deliberation process. So if you have any questions in general or material requests, we can, we can work on getting you that information.
Mr. Altman, there are no hands raised at this time, and I know at the beginning of your presentation, you try to recap everything that we've been asking. Is there a way that we can just have a work session to go over those asks? That we can just sit down and go through those and tackle them?
These questions here?
Yes, and I think that that this is not the same slide you had in the last PowerPoint. Some of those in the last PowerPoint haven't been resolved. Or did, or did they all get resolved in the packet you left for us this evening in our mailboxes?
So everything with a check by it? You either have in your current, you have it from the previous, or it's with what you have this evening?
Okay, so this is the running slide. I think there was, I have a note of other requests that that's not listed on this screen. So do we, do I need to meet with you to consolidate those, just to make sure I'm tracking correctly?
Sure.
Okay. Then if that's the case, at our next meeting, there was an ask at our last council meeting to share with us. Council opted to follow your guidance in the budget work sessions. What was the next one that you're planning to have for council to discuss? Is it one of you just asking now, whatever we want to discuss?
Yes, I mean, it's, I'm here, ready for y'all to let me know what you want to do, any kind of outstanding issues that you have for Thursday. Some of it, it may be that it's a quick turnaround, depending upon what information. Uh, some of it, it may be that it's a quick turnaround, depending upon what information you're looking for. But uh, what is, what is, what are the questions of council? Uh, what can we do to uh address your concerns or questions as we move forward with with working on the budget?
Okay, I think that we should base off of some of the comments I've heard, go have a session where we can at least try to go department by department, but then in between there, if council can send any other remaining questions to you, and then that meeting can as well be split in half, one half be unresolved questions that we can discuss um after you consolidate it, and then the second half can be department by department um to address those concerns as well. Um, that's just a recommendation that I would propose, since it's just a blank template for council discussion. Um, I think that will be helpful, so that way everyone has an equal opportunity to submit any lingering questions or any other items that hasn't been resolved, and then we can address the departments um in individually, because I remember last year, that was the complaint that I received, that we didn't go section by section in the budget. Um, if there's no ob- no objections to that, I I do see two hands raised, so I'll call in Counselor Randolph and then Counselor Denton.
Thank you. I would suggest too that we spend some time on the outside agencies and talk thoroughly, that's in our budget right now, I mean, in our mailbox right now. According to Mr. Altman, I have not had a chance to look at it, but I certainly think that that should take uh a a fair amount of time for us to really hash through the outside agency requests, especially in this tight budget time and discuss amongst all of council what our thoughts are for how and how much we're going to fund these outside agencies. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Everett. That's a great recommendation. I'll add that to the list. Counselor Denton?
Um, I, my question is, are we going, the questions for Thursday night, are we going to assume that we're trying to cut the revenue by the five hundred thousand? So we would know where to cut, or are we going to go with the budget as submitted and that it can be corrected?
That, that's, are you asking me if you're, if you're?
Whoever can answer it, I mean.
So this is, so we just discussed this briefly for the first time this evening, and we just received this presentation. And so Mr. Altman just gave recommendations, because that was the ask I had at the last budget cycle. And I think that um when we go department by department and talk about outside agency, as Mr. Altman also noted, we can have that conversation. Um, it may be that we don't cut, depending on if majority council does not want to cut, or it may be when we go through the departments, we can find ways to skim a little. We may not get to five hundred, we may get to a hundred thousand, may get to twenty thousand. It's still part of the discussions, and I don't think that we're there yet unless a majority can say right now that they're not willing to um try to find reductions and want to just go with the C manager has suggested, then we can eliminate that conversation altogether and just focus on going through the rest of what he has presented for us. So it's, it's up to council. So um, I think Counselor Denton, you're leaning on the side of just going with what Mr. Altman has presented, and if that's the case, then you know, if there's a majority that supports you on that, we, we can drop the conversation. Um, I'll defer back.
I'm not re- either, I just think to go over these budgets, we need to keep in mind if we are trying to, I think, say that the revenue is going to be around a half a million less, and we need to look at items we can cut. Um, I, I, I just don't know going line by line, how you're going to do this if you are not trying to accomplish cutting the budget because we're cutting revenues.
Um, I think that, no, looking at the slide that he has here for us, um, after the work session on the seventh, we have two more work sessions where I assume Mr. Altman has left wide open for us to discuss. And if my assumption is correct, if we tailor the next meeting to be unanswered questions outside agencies and department by department, and I don't mean by going line item by line item, what I mean by saying, hey, um, C manager's budget, anybody got anything in here, he can answer questions, just go department by department and answering questions. I think by the end of that, we'll have a better picture if there is room to do any other additional skimming. And if there is room to do additional skimming and council wants to go that direction, we certainly have the nineteenth and the twenty-one to drill down and look at those numbers. Um, but I think that the next work session can give us a good idea, that's something that's feasible, when we look a bit closer at some of these numbers. Does that help?
That's fine. Just so we, we all know what the playing field is.
Yeah, and then at the, on this, on the seventh, a meeting work session, we can actually, I can make a note to say, hey, now that we finished this work session, how does council feel? Do you want us to try to look deeper? Or are we content with what we have presented to us? I can make a note, and Mr. Altman make a note of that as well, and we can make sure we put that on there for discussion, Counselor Denton.
Okay, that's good.
That works for you?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, perfect. Um, Counselor Randolph?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Um, Mr. Altman, um, I know that you have said that you're comfortable with the budget that was presented. However, you're planning on giving, um, per my request, uh, some indication of what the current budget savings might be that will roll into the GL for this coming year. Additionally, if we decide to cut the budget or maybe cut it less or more uh than what's been indicated uh at a half a million, um, if we cut it less uh uh in the revenue side, but yet we end up with more expenditure cuts, we can actually put that cost savings into uh where and hold on to that for the year. Help me understand and the rest of council to understand what we could do with uh budget cuts that we make that um go beyond a balanced budget.
So uh to, to address any savings in the current fiscal year.
Right.
Uh, I would not suggest that they roll into the current year, so we wouldn't want to use fund balance, that would just roll to the fun, our, our fund balance, that rainy day fund, if you will, and that's where that would sit.
Yes, sir.
Uh, if we made any cuts, regardless of whether you hold revenue uh stable or reduce it and make more recut cuts, whatever cuts you make beyond what revenue is, is settled on, whether it's what we've projected or reduction of that, if you make more cuts than that, I would suggest that you put the money in the contingency account, that way it's there, it's accessible, uh, and it's, it's part of the budget, but it's not dedicated to a specific uh department or item, if you will. It's available to be able to be utilized wherever we need it uh at a given time.
Okay, so making more budget cuts than revenue projected, we can have that money throughout the year. And what if we have something left over in that contingency? Does it roll over, or does it go? Where does it go year in next year?
It goes, it would go back, everything in the general fund at the end of the year that isn't spent goes to our bottom line, our can, our rainy day fund.
Right. Now, would you briefly, for the people that are listening, and for my benefit as well, explain how much we have in the rainy day fund currently, uh, not adding anything to it, or approximately off the top of your head? Um, yeah, I know. And then uh explain briefly what we use that for.
So the explanation of what we use it for is we use it during the year if there's an emergency that comes up that we do not, it's that we don't have funding to be able to address. Or for instance, when we agreed to do the summer internship program, and we did not budget for that, we went to that fund to get some money to support it that program. So it's there for us. Uh, it's not part of our operate, annual operating budget, it sits outside of it to provide us some stability and access to funds should we need it in a, for a particular issue or emergency. Um, a- as far as how much is there, I know the number that I'll put out there is going to be, is probably going to be wrong. Let me just uh get a number, get the number for us.
Well, over four million, right?
I, I believe so.
Yeah, okay. That's what I was thinking, that it's, I, I mean, that's a that's a ballpark for sure, but it's more than four million dollars. So I want people to understand that we're not, you know, that we have this rainy day fund in case of emergencies that council. I'm sorry, Counselor Randolph, what was that number again you said?
So.
Over four million, I believe.
Yeah, the, in total, in total, you have in the rainy day fund, you have cash and liquidity. So you have investments that could be withdrawn to give you additional cash, so I, 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 um, I think the cash number may be around three million.
Yeah.
Total liquidity is going to be over five, five point two.
Okay. And I didn't expect you off the top of your head to give us a, a, a round, a really uh good number, but something that we can at least keep in the back of our minds, especially if we cut the budget more than the revenue projected. Um, that's where you would suggest that it goes for the remainder of the budget for uh for all of next year.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Counselor Randolph, are you complete?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, Counselor Palam, and then I'll go, because there are no hands raised right now. Go ahead, Counselor Palam. Your line is muted. Counselor Palam?
Hey, uh, where in this budget will we see the rainy day fund balance for cash, and tell me what's the difference between rainy day and contingency?
So the rainy day fund is not in the budget.
Hmm, how can it not be in the budget?
It's not something that we budget, it's money that's available in a separate account. We don't budget for it every year.
Okay.
But then uh contingency is money within the operating budget, so we have a contingency line item in the operating budget to allow us to address issues as they come up during the year. For instance, uh, we hired, the city attorney hired a legal assistant this year, that legal assistant wasn't budgeted. We had, we went to the contingency fund to get the money to make that hire and take care of that issue. Uh, so that's what the contingency is to deal with smaller level operating issues, certainly not, uh, well, if we had an emergency, we would go to contingency first. If we did not have enough money there, and dependent upon the level of the magnitude of the emergency, then you would look to go to the rainy day fund and other funds that you would have money available to address the emergency. But we would look at contingency first, because that's, and you budget contingency, that's within your operating budget annually to address any unknowns that come up during the year. Because you know something's going to happen that you didn't budget for, and we need to have a source of funds that we can go to, to address the issue.
Where is that listed in the budget?
There's actually a contingency line item in, in the budget. It flipping through the pages, I, I'll, I'll find the page for you where it's at.
Okay. Okay, and then um manage, oh. I saw throughout the budget, people have management consultants at different calls, as we get through the bud, go through the budget, we'll see that. Why is there so many consultants needed in each department? I listed most of them for each department, but we can just be thinking about that as we discuss each department. Everyone has a, a service contracts and everyone has management consultants just about, and I, I don't understand, in one, some budget had two hundred thousand in management consultant. Uh, what, you know why, right off so many departments would need consulting someone for their job, or what is it for?
Well, in, in a lot of instances, and I can draw from my own experience here, prior, we're not deep. You know, we don't have in the development department, twenty people that are just standing around in the planning shop, waiting for somebody to give them something to do. We have two planners. So if we do something like uh implementing the strategic, our comprehensive plan to develop a form-based code for downtown, they have to, if they do that in-house, it's in addition to everything they're doing at all the time. So sometimes it's a lot easier to hire the consultant to get it done and get it done expeditiously in a short period of time, so you supplement your staff with a consultant, get it done and get it over with and move on, as opposed to trying to work it into uh an already busy work schedule, given the fact, I mean, we do not have a, a lot of depth in a lot of our departments, and that's where the utilization of a consultant helps. So um that's, and I, I, the two hundred thousand, I don't, I'm not sure which one you're talking about right off the top of my head. Um, but that's probably why we have the consulting fees, is, or you have an area of expertise that you don't have in-house that you need to get from somewhere else. So um you're going to design a a new building, you know, none of us are architects, so we would have to, you know, if you were going to piecemeal the project, you may have money in a budget one year for design work. See, and that's why you go out and get that person to help you, or uh you may have security issues and you need to hire a security consultant to look at all your buildings and review and make recommendations over uh security upgrades that may be needed.
So the other thing is, um, so maybe when you give us that notion of what's going, that's already to get a listing from each department of what they were returning to the general fund. And then we add consulting management, that means if they didn't use that management consultant for that year, is that also possible for them to list all unused monies per line item? This, I guess it's already in here, but.
Yeah, so then you're in the packet that you have.
Right. I mean, it's, I know, I, because it has the zero out or whatever, but just have a separate listing of seeing how much money going back in the general fund uh by department. You know, and the line item that was not utilized would be good for me.
Right, so.
Something you can ask for and get done automatically.
We won't know how much go back to eat, from each department to the general fund, really, until we close out the year.
I know, yeah.
Though, uh, but you, if you, if you've looked at a department and you go into the uh expenditures to date uh piece that was uh is in your.
Tell us how they use that line item, you know what I'm saying? If a consultant, what is you consult with, might be something that we need to know as a council as well. But the bottom line is, we don't have the CAFR nowhere near finished for this fiscal year, so we really just guessing anyway, I guess, everything. And with that, with the eighteen, is Mr. Terry now on the line, is he?
I don't believe Mr. Terry's on the line.
Yeah, did you tell him to go?
We talked about it. I think he had a commitment this evening that he hadn't, he couldn't get out of.
Well, I hope he make it for the June the thirtieth, at least one meeting, but um uh, what else am I going to say? Jesus.
You were looking at uh a description, and then you were mentioning eighteen CAFR.
Yeah.
That's.
Have any idea how that's going in at all? I mean, no one has said anything yet.
I, I, I know that what I know, I don't know the number, I know that we, we're, we, we look like we're going to finish to the good, I don't know a number at this point in time, I haven't heard back from the auditors, I know they're doing their remote review, and we're working with them, but I don't have a number as of yet as to how, what, what we're going to finish, if it's a one dollar to the good or a million dollars to the good, I just know at this point, it looks like we're going to finish to the good.
Okay, so then, so what comes out of this is that how they, we'll, we'll get a line item adjustment to see how much money is going back into the general fund per line of money, even if it's after this, hopefully it'd be before we finish the, the uh budget process, if we can, okay?
So are you talking about money coming from FY eighteen and putting it in?
Not eighteen.
Okay.
Last year, the money that right now they've spent, if you had a fifty thousand dollar consultant management line, you only spent twenty, tell me what you spent the twenty on, and you putting thirty back in the general fund.
Right. Okay.
Thank you.
Hello?
Hello? Do you have a question?
I do.
Okay.
Sorry, um, I was waiting for Mayor Gore, but she, I don't know. Anyway, um, on the revenue projections, you've got, uh, one of the last line items that you gave us was capital projects fund 071. Estimated revenues were a million dollars from state sources and transfer from our, um, our budget, uh, us to go into that budget was $200,000. Is that the road paving?
Yeah, the, most of that is the revenue sharing that we get from VDOT.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, um, and, um, for the rest of council, I will just say that as a counselor, I feel like if we're going to be looking for reductions and, uh, cutting the budget, which I certainly am going to do or want to do, uh, try to do, I feel like, uh, foremost, we need to be looking at our budget with the clerk's budget and council's budget. And so I certainly think as leaders, we should start in-house with our budgets first. And look at how we can slim our budgets down if we're going to expect and have expected our, the staff and all departments in the city to reduce. So, um, I would be willing to, uh, next Thursday, look at our budget and the clerk's budget. If anybody else is ready, w- w- willing and able to do that next Thursday or whenever. Cause I certainly think that, uh, those two budgets need to be, uh, cut back as well. Thank you.
Thank you. So I was speaking, but, um, I got interrupted, so I'll just jump in to, I wrote down some notes from the conversations. The first.
Did I interrupt you?
No, you, you're doing it now. I, I was speaking, answering Mr. Altman, my questions.
You were, must have been on mute because none of us heard you. I don't think.
It's okay.
I couldn't hear you at all. I'm sorry.
No, you, you're fine. I'm making notes of what you're asking for. Um, so Mr. Altman, the, in regards to the expenditure report I have requested, is there a way that that can be given to us in, in, in Excel sheets? So that way I can manipulate it because right now, when I go pick up the packet, if it's printed out, I'll have to manually enter all those numbers into the system. I've done it before, but I know now that the report can be exported. Can you check what finance to get that, um, in Excel format, please? And then in regards to finance, the next work session that council has on May 7th, can Mr. Terry be present? If he's given.
Go ahead. Sorry.
No, no, can he, can he be directed to attend the council? I mean, this is the third time we've asked for him to come to one of our budget work sessions. And I'm pretty sure, I mean, like you said, he had a prior commitment, but if he is available, can you ensure that he attends the May 7th meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you. The next point I have down here is, um, I don't see in, when we talk about the changes in expenditures and revenue, I know that several of us who've been at council for a while, we were waiting for this conversation to appear about tourism. Are we going to have that conversation in this budget cycle?
No, ma'am. No, we, that was an item that we talked about, but given the current situation, uh, we decided that with keeping our budget level and with our, our current year.
Okay. Well, then at a future work session, we need to talk about, um, what that looks like for a council in this upcoming year in terms of our expectations. Um, for those that we're funding to do our tourism, in my personal opinion. Um, then I also have a note that says, and just for a point of clarity, um, we mentioned that we went to our emergency, uh, rainy day fund for the workforce program. For those watching, I want everyone to know that was because it was reimbursed by the states. So we paid out first and they were supposed to reimburse us. Mr. Dane was working on that, correct? Mr. Altman or Mr. Dane?
Yeah, that's, that's, yes.
I don't want them to think that we took out of it just because it was a project we didn't plan for is that we worked really hard to get that money from the state. So, um, that was reimbursable funds. And just for a point of clarity, because we do have several people joining us and, um, and I think Council Pelham and Council Round both touched on this, but just to tie it together, when we have, when we talk about our money as a city, the public really does need to understand that, um, all of our money goes into one big checking account. And then we have the rainy day fund and then we have fund balance. So you have assigned and unassigned fund money. Our rainy day fund, if my memory is correct, it's supposed to be 5% of our operating budget. And so historically it's been 4.6 million dollars that we put in a rainy day fund and that's supposed to be used only for emergencies. And it is supposed to be percentage of our operating fund. And so if we increase or decrease our operating budget, our rainy day fund is supposed to match percentage wise. Now, what Council Pelham, I, I think I heard a little bit of what she was asking for. It's similar to what, um, those of us who've been on council for some time, we've been asking about our fund balance, the unassigned money. And that's a portion of the budget is pretty much like our checking account. It's all the money that we have not allocated towards anything regarding our operational budget, our, uh, uh, enterprise accounts, our capital improvements. That's just like our savings, our, our money that's sitting aside. Because we have not been able to complete our audits, we don't have a clear picture of exactly how much money we have in savings. That is not our allocated emergency money, AKA the rainy day fund. We don't know how much our checking account is holding right now. Um, when we last talked about this and we've asked for where we get like a general guest estimate from finance department. But Mr. Terry has always said, when I know Council Pelham and I have always asked about this, he won't be able to give us a clear picture about how much money is in our checking account. Until he gets closer to getting caught up on the audits. So without that, we really don't know besides guest estimating how much money we have that's not allocated for emergency funding. And so sure, we may have emergency funding put aside, but in general, we need to know how much is our checking account, how much free money we have available in case we were to do a one-time project. We shouldn't be having to turn to our emergency rainy day fund to fund one-time things because that money should be coming from our checking account. We should have some amount of savings available, um, in, in our account. And that money has been drawn down over the years. When Mr. Whitaker was here, we had a, a nice chunk of money in that account that was not being used. But what happened is we were running our budgets, well, we found out during the audit process when we got delayed, that in fact, we were running our budgets in the hole. So we would, the city would end each fiscal year, I think two, at least in a row that we are aware of now, that we were short like $900,000 in one year and I think $500,000 another year. And so what that caused us to do was to borrow against our own, I won't say borrow, but to take our checking account money to plug in that hole. And so that's why it's really important, in my opinion, to try to start off with as least as possible in terms of revenue projections, because one, we do not know what our checking account looks like. Two, we should not be using a rainy day fund to do one-time expenditures because we should have savings available to handle those. We shouldn't dip into our savings. And then three, because we are still guest estimating on prior year audits, we don't really know how we have squared up over these years until we're caught up. And so yes, I do think that you in the, in your budget committee has done the best with the projections and I'm me asking to look at a reduction is not saying you guys are not sure or confident in what you, um, have proposed. I'm just thinking about, uh, in terms of COVID-19 and the status of the federal government, um, they've put out trillions of dollars. There's obviously need to do more. State governments are scrambling to find money. Uh, and if there would be a time, let's say we have a financial crisis and we need to borrow money due to COVID-19 or unemployment or something like that, we don't have a buffer to fall back on and we're an independent city. And so I'm just saying, as, as frugal as it can be, is the best approach because, um, right now they're talking about if city, if states run out of money, they can go bankrupt. So, um, that's my only suggestion. Again, I, I was just asking, since we're proposing an increase of 500,000, if we could try to scale back on that. Um, and everybody knows how much I love National Cities and BML. And I'm like, hey, if you got to cut from there or any other place, um, I'm willing to do so as long as it's equitable across the board. Certainly as leaders, we should look to where we can cut, but we also have to be responsible for the entire, um, city's budget and also making sure what we cut doesn't have a, a loss and benefit. Kind of what was mentioned with public safety, same thing that can be said about what we invest our funds into. The last thing I'll say is in taking notes on what we can talk about for the next upcoming work session, I have Mr. Altman, can you make sure you're tracking with me? Unanswered budget questions for council to submit those to you. So you could try to put some together for the work session. Outside agency expenditures, um, to look at departments by department, and then we can just do it overall. And if there's a question, we can jump on it when we get to that department. Potential savings from this current year's budget. And then, um, to make a decision, if we want to continue the conversation about reduction, um, overall. And to Council Randolph's point she made about council's budget, when we go department by department, we can touch on council's budget as well when we get to that section. So right now I just have five points that I was tracking in the comments. Do you have the same points, Mr. Altman?
I have, uh, department by department discussion. Uh, the outside agency request, which the letters are in your packet this evening. The decision on revenue, uh, discussion of wanting to, the rainy day fund number. Then Mrs. Pelham asked about the contingency line item. So we'll just look in the budget and find out what page that's on. She also discussed, uh, a description of the management consultant fees that are in budgets, which can be handled in the line item, but we'll need to know, uh, if they didn't utilize them, why? You, you asked about a year to date, uh, in, for current bu- budget year in Excel. Uh, then you talked about having to have some future work session on tourism expectations.
Yeah. That's not for the budget cycle though. That's, if you're not proposing a change, that's later down the road.
Yeah, okay. Okay. And then you ha- I had the COVID-19's, uh, piece. And then we also, we made a comment earlier about looking to see what associations are doing to make adjustments with regard to COVID-19. Uh, and that kind of plays into Counselor Randolph's comment earlier about if we're going to look at travel, but we have to be, we have to look at it from the standpoint of also what types of certifications are out there that people may have to do. Whether, while it may be not actual travel, but it may be online registration in order to maintain your certification, uh, for the professional development piece. Uh, so we've got to look at kind of those things.
Okay. So if anyone has something that, um, we're, we did not track in our notes, please let us know. I see several hands raised. I have Counselor Randolph, Vice Mayor Bennett, and then Counselor Pelham.
I would, uh, I'm very glad to hear that. It sounds like most of councils looking at budget cutting. Last year during the budget session, I certainly wanted to cut the budget, but, um, we, we didn't seem to be on that same path last year. And, um, I'm glad that we're going to be looking at cutting this budget and I hope that in the coming, uh, several weeks, we can look at cutting and changing, uh, a lot of the excessive spending. So I'll look forward to that. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yeah. Am I muted?
No, did you mean to raise your hand?
I did, I did.
Okay, go ahead.
So, um, I do have a question and it's, uh, w- we talked about the, if, correct me if I'm wrong, the contingency. We used it to fund, and it's an emergency rainy day, right?
No, the contingency fund, and that's why I was trying to provide clarity because I think in the comments earlier, it got muddy. The contingency fund is like an emergency, a pot of money, but it's in our operation budget, our operational budget. So in the budget that we're discussing now, you will see a section in that budget for contingency fund. And if I recall correctly, it's, it's a pretty nice chunk of change. I remember one year it was like $400,000. That is separate than the rainy day fund. The rainy day fund is in our overall, I'll, I'll put it for the public as well, our overall bank account. So picture our bank account, one pot of money in a split, split into sections. One section is the rainy day fund and the other section is our general fund. Our operation, our operational budget comes out of our general fund. Inside of our operation budget is the contingency fund. I don't know if that makes sense. We might need to put like a, it's, it's, it's kind of hard to explain without having like a visual to go with it.
Because we've been throwing around rainy day and contingency tonight. So here's the thing. Where did we pull the money from when we did the summer intern program and for the, uh, the attorney's assistant? Did that come out of the rainy day?
So no, and I'll ask Mr. Altman to correct me. So when council voted for the, um, summer internship program, that came out of the rainy day fund. And the reason why is because the state was funding it. It was a reimbursement. So it wasn't that we were spending the money total. We spent it upfront and the state reimbursed us. So that came out the rainy day fund. The, the attorney's position, other expenses throughout the year came out of the contingency fund in our operating budget. Correct, Mr. Altman?
Yes, ma'am. The, you're correct. We funded the, uh, this, at the legal assistant out of our operating contingency and the money for the summer internship program did come from fund balance, but we did that as, as a result of it being reimbursable.
Okay. So that, that was just my only question because it, when we say rainy day, that to me, that's emergency. And I'm, and that was going to be reimbursed, but we really have to talk about that, you know? Because if we, if we're sitting here and we are, we have, um, we're labeling these monies or these line items, that's what they should be used for. Now, if there's a problem that, I mean, I don't remember it coming to council for us to get it out of the rainy day fund. But I think that's something that we need to really look at because we cannot, um, money is separated for a reason, right? Everything should be accounted for. And even though it was going to be put back, I still have, I still feel a little funny about saying rainy day fund for something that's not an emergency. And this is another thing, that should have been something projected. And, and not only that, we should as well think about, we, maybe council needs to look, sit down and talk about how we're going to prioritize and how we're going to plan things out. So I, I really, I'm, I'm re- I'm really not feeling so good about that, but that's something we're going to talk about and, um, I, I just hope you guys see my concern.
Yes. And Council Vice Mayor Bennett, I'll ask Mr. Dane to mute himself. If my memory is correct, the motion on the agenda that council voted on specifically said taking out the rainy day fund. Mr. Dane, can you mute your line to answer that? Cause you presented that.
Yes, we actually had looked to take it out of just, um, um, undesignated reserve, but Mr. Terry said, because we don't have a certain number there, that you would need to take it out of the, um, rainy day fund. And since it was reimbursed, once the money came back from the state, it would just go right back in to replace it.
And that's how I remember it. I never remember a saying taken for the rainy day. So.
That, that was part of the motion.
We, 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 we really sit down a whole as a council and that we're clear and we make decisions together and that we can understand everything because right now it's like, if you, if you tell me it's an emergency, like we need to plan. This is, this is something that's just not like, oh, you know what? Let's do this because we can get a grant for it. No, this needs to be planned. And if it can't, especially during these times, we need to figure out what is the priority for it. And that's my opinion.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor Bennett, after this meeting, I'll forward you the minutes. Um, as Mr. Dane said, that was a part of the motion. So just, just to make you feel a little bit better about your concern with that, I do agree with you about planning, but just for this particular item, um, I'll forward you the minutes so that way you can look over it. Cause I don't want you to feel like you did not support something that you weren't aware of or that we thought that we did something different.
What I'm saying is that when we were, when it was brought to our attention, the, the money that we're supposed to take from was a different, was named differently than a same rainy day fund. I don't remember that. So, um,
That's why I'm trying to clarify the motion a- and the right upset rainy day fund. And so I understand your point. I'm just going to make sure you get the minutes. So that way you can look over it again. Again, I don't want you feeling, feeling upset about something. I'm just trying to provide clarity that.
About anything. I'm just, I, I'm a little confused because if we say rainy day is an emergency, what constitutes an emergency? And if we're able to go and use money that way, then maybe we need to create a policy that says, hey, look, this is only for one, two, three, four and five. Because we, we really need to be, we really need to hold ourselves accountable. This is the taxpayers' money.
Correct. And that's, I mean, that's why the requests go to council to vote on because council's the ultimate person who holds the purse. So it went to council, council voted unanimously to pass that. So we can make a note for a future work session to talk about that. That could be added to the finance policy that I brought to council last year for us to discuss in October. We can add that into that conversation because that's still pending. Um, but we can definitely talk about what that looks like, uh, as well. But ultimately it's council decision, how they choose to spend the money. And I, I do remember also Counselor Pelham asking for us to do the same thing when it comes to contingency funds. because that is in the operating budget. And right now, it can be used for anything.
Point of information, please.
So we can, one second, so we can take care of that too. Counselor Randolph, what's your point of information?
Um I'd like the, is the city attorney on the line?
She is, but she's muted at the moment. She can wait for her to unmute herself. You can ask her, ask your question while she's unmuting.
I have been chastised a couple of times during this evening because I didn't raise my hand fast enough or I spoke before my hand was completely raised. And my point of information is if we're trying to control this meeting, uh we should not be getting rebuttals from the chair. We, uh that's not appropriate for a counselor to have a question asked and there to be rebuttals, I didn't think. And so I wanted the city attorney to explain to me how that works.
Okay. So she can address that, but she says, she's wrote me a note saying she can't be heard right now. So I think I T's working on that. And while she's trying to be heard, I'll ask a point of order. Is it considered rebuttal or also just clearing the record, I asked for Mr. Dane to answer.
Point of order, it's a point of information.
I'm I'm asking a point of order to clarify. Um while we wait for the C attorney to work out her I T issue, um Counselor Pelham, you have your hand raised. Your line is muted.
I think in addition to you might can send the minutes, but what we really need to do is have Mr. Uh March to look in munis and tell us where the money came from. Was it from rainy day or was it from, what fund did it actually come from? I'm thinking it didn't come from rainy day too. But that that will be the verification of actually what fund it went through. And also to send us the, what is the process to get reimbursed from the state? If you've done that, it should be paperwork, right? So get that paperwork to see, has that been forwarded, verified that it has been forwarded back to the state that we will get our money back uh from the state into the contingency fund. And that five percent of the, I mean, the rainy day fund. And that is a state requirement, that five percent. But as you said, we normally had ten percent or more over the years. It has dwindled down to probably eight percent or whatever. The other thing. So tell us too is how much money was reimbursed for the summer program period? While you you verified, what fund did the money actually come from? It could be in the minutes is rainy day, but let's get the ac- actually fund that it came from. Okay?
Yes, Mr. Altman.
You wanna interject? Fine.
No, no, I I thought you were finished. Go ahead.
I'm not finished. I also um in consideration for the budget scenarios, right now we have as is what you're presenting. But one, you can also look at maybe, we're looking at something that had a, would a budget look at a ten percent cut as well as a twenty percent cut and have your departments look at it that way. To see how our budget will look as well to get, that that would be another option. And one other thing is that, did I hear you say that you will ask the departments to identify how they use the management consultant line item, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
How they use it. And then if they didn't use it, that you could tell us what's left over. Okay. Just wanted to verify that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Pelham and Mr. Altman. Um it's not like he was gonna say something when she had asked the first part of her question, or Mr. Dane wanted the two, I heard. Want to you say something, try to say something.
Well, I was gonna say that the 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 policy that you have is ten percent of your general fund operating budget. So it would be five point two million that you had either in cash or a combination of cash and liquidity and investments.
And then Mr. Um Dane, you're managing the reimbursement can, and know what Counselor Pelham has asked to verify what fund it came out of.
It's it's all, all the reimbursement's been submitted to state. It's all been reimbursed and it flows back into general fund. And then finance takes care of it from there to replenish. Uh but but we'll, we'll get financed to uh provide all documentation.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Altman, I think you gave me back controls um for the meeting that was in your presentation, correct?
Yeah, I felt that that might be easier for you to be able to mute and unmute people.
But I haven't finished. It, does that mean that you can tell us Charlie where it came from? Not from, if it's not the
And we'll get finance provide the documentation of where it was funded from, where the money went back to. We'll get them to do all that, but every dime that we pu- spent on the program was reimbursable.
And y'all know five percent of a hundred and seventy-four million dollars is eight point seven million, right?
It's
It's of the general.
General fund. It's not the total budget, it's other general fund, the fifty-two.
Two, okay. So in that, so that would be two point five, a little bit over.
Five point two for ten percent.
Ten percent of ten, okay, okay, five point two.
Yes, ma'am.
And if that's that, I don't see Ms. Robinson join back in. I'm double checking the list. I still see her muted. Ms. Robinson, um I'm calling on you right now. And if if you can't comment, please message me back in the chat so I can make sure it's not working.
Okay, my clarification after, after this. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Still have a question. My hand's still raised.
Okay. So Ms. Robinson, just testing it out. I don't hear you, so um I T can keep working on that in the interim. Go ahead, Counselor Randolph.
Mr. Dane just mentioned something that they had looked at, a revenue. Mr. Dane, can you come off of mute? You had said that Mr. Terry told you to pull, you had to pull it out of the rainy day fund because there wasn't enough in rev- with uh
No, ma'am. What I said was, when we put the council agenda item together, we requested it from unders- from undesigned reserve. And Mr. Terry said, no, because that's not identified amount. Um we should take it from the contingency fund, uh the the rainy day fund. And so that's what was put in the agenda item, as I recollect, but we'll get all that information pulled and found and uh
I guess my question is, I I understand that if there was undesignedated not enough in that or not appropriate to pull from there, why didn't you pull from the contingency for the budget that year?
That year, we didn't have contingency. Mr. Altman established that contingency fund since he's been here.
Okay, that answers my question then. Okay, thank you, Mr. Dane. I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Yes, Ms. Robinson.
Okay. I am now present.
Uh Counselor Randolph, did you want to get your clarity now or offline?
Um I can do either or, it doesn't matter, but uh I don't, Mrs. Robinson, did you hear my question earlier?
Would you repeat it for me, ma'am? I I think I heard part of it, but I want it to be sure.
Um I was doing a point of information because I didn't understand or needed clarity on what the uh rebuttal um concerns or limitation for for a um Chair of the meeting to um to talk back with uh someone. And I wanted to get some clarity on that, please.
Well, typically, statements are made um back and forth between the chair. Uh the the challenge here is that there is a work session going on to the extent the council's rules speak to how the discussion should go. Um your rule, which is contained at Rule two oh three, specifically says that those limitations do not apply for work sessions or public hearings. And so uh with that as the backdrop, because the chair is responding to whatever the statement is, it's going to be a little bit hard to control other than whether, you know, the statement is out of order. And because there are no motions, there really isn't a statement that's out of order. So you'd have to go to the content of the statement to really challenge it at this point. So it's a process question. I understand the point, but the rules, this kind of falls between the rules based on council's own rules. And then how the chair typically controls the discussion under Roberts rules.
And I understand that and I appreciate that answer, but we've been held very strictly to rules in this meeting. And I would expect everybody to be held to the same strictness uh if we're gonna be held that strictly in our rules. So you and I can talk about this offline. I appreciate your comments and your uh help in in getting me to understand uh what should and should not be taking place.
And point of there there rules that were talked about haven't been violated. It's just a matter of personal preference of how they're being how people are personalizing them. So no one violated the rules that I can decipher based off of Ms. Robinson's answer. Um I do see Vice Mayor Bennett, her hand raised. And before I call her, just wanna make sure I'm tracking this request that stemmed stemmed from her comment. We'll get you the minute for this. And then Mr. Altman and Mr. Dane are gonna pull the budget information that was in regards to where the funding came from and if it was reimbursed. Um I think that's the only three asks that we added on to our list. I wanna make sure before you opt the line that Mr. Altman and Mr. Dane are tracking the same thing I have in regards to this. And I don't want us to lose this point. Right, Mr. Altman? You have the same thing?
Uh yes, ma'am. And I actually added, uh in addition, we would just get the council agenda packet for that night, cause that would have uh where we asked the request to come from in addition to council minutes. And uh the reimbursement.
Mr. Altman, your microphone. In a future work session, we can address the um the concern to put this a little bit stricter in our rules or procedures to address the concerns that were raised as well. Miss.
Okay, yes. Um let me lower my hands, I don't forget. Okay. We discussed, I don't know, ma'am, ma'am, I'm asking you this question. Do we talk about going line by line? Next ask was for the budget or the revenue? I mean, for everything, actually. Because I I thought that's what I heard you say.
Um so I I did a mixture, cause I think some people don't wanna go line by line. I think some people do. So I tried to find what's some common ground was to say we'll go department by department. And so when we call that department, if you have a line item in there, you can talk about it then.
Okay, that's a good, that's great. Because here's the thing, I mean, I understand about the coin purse and all this other stuff. But I really see council as being the gatekeeper here, you know? We have to be accountable about where where the money goes, how it's spent, and that, and that is in the best interest of the taxpayer. Because everything we have, any monies that we have is the taxpayers' money. And even as council, we're, we are actually um elected because to be that gatekeeper. So I wanna make sure that we understand together as a council and that we can make decisions together as a team.
Yes. Okay. So um just to recap for everyone, make sure again I have my points right for the next work session. Any unanswered questions um that council may give to C manager, outside agencies, um department by department, potential sa- um potential savings in this F Y budget. Consultant fees, which will go into unanswered questions, management consultant fees. Um and COVID nineteen travel questions, which will go also unanswered questions. But then also specifically the contingency um line item funds. And I know there's some other requests, but in terms of the work session, those are the topics that I had. And I think I captured everyone's topics that they threw out. Did I miss a topic?
Yes.
Yes. What's your topic I missed?
Is it my turn?
Yeah, what's the topic I missed?
You didn't miss it, but um is it possible to also add service contracts? How they're defined in each department.
Okay, that can go along with the management consulting, cause that's kind of likewise, but we can, I'll, I'm gonna can take, get something on that.
But it's a different line item.
Correct. I'll add that to the list. Is there anything else that I?
I just wanted to make sure, Mr. Altman is gonna give us the minutes for the item about the rainy day funding the the summer intern, but he actually gonna tell us what line item it came out of.
Yes.
Fun, but I don't think so.
Yep, and we recapped that. Well, we have it.
Thank you.
Okay. Um is there anything else that I missed off of my list? To make sure we have on the next meeting, to make sure everyone get their needs addressed. No one's saying anything, so I think I captured it all. And I see Counselor Randolph, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion's made by Counselor Randolph, seconded by Mayor Gore. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Gore. Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Counselor Randolph.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway.
Yes.
Counselor Denton.
Yes.
Counselor Pelham.
Counselor Pelham.
Your mic is muted, Counselor Pelham.
We're supposed to go to nine thirty.
She's doing a roll call right now on the floor to adjourn.
Can we discuss adjournment?
No, we can't. For the rules, so it's not me making that decision per the.
I know, I'm just saying, y'all. Well, you have a meeting if you're gonna adjourn it or.
Can you do your yes or no, please?
I said, oh, no.
Go ahead, Ms. Brown.
She was the last one. Um meetings adjourn.
Everyone, the meeting has been adjourned. We'll see you next time.
Crazy. Come on. Crazy, crazy, crazy.